This is now the time and place for the first hearing of a public input regarding the composition of districts for the city's transition to district-based city council elections. Before we begin, are there any disclosures from any council members relating to this hearing? All right. Mr. Decarenji, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have been, Mayor Anthony.
All right. And do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
Yes, you do.
And has this city received any written communications on this matter? And have those been provided to all city council members?
Yes, they have been.
All right. Thank you. Is your microphone on? I can barely hear you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Okay.
It might be me. I'm really quiet.
Mr. City Attorney, will you please summarize the matter for us and introduce the city's consultant?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and for the public this evening. This public hearing is the result of the city council adopting a resolution of intention to transition to district-based elections. The council also authorized staff to hire an expert in the field. That expert is National Demographics Corporation. They also happen to have been hired by the Burbank Unified School District to help them with the transition to by-district elections. We have with us this evening Mr. Douglas Johnson, who is a recognized expert in the area of districting. He has experience in innumerable cities, although he could probably put a number on it, we won't tonight, in assisting many different public agencies in transitioning to by-district elections. And he has a wonderful PowerPoint presentation to walk us through this evening. Mr. Johnson?
All right. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. We have done a lot of this work. Actually, our firm has been doing this since 1979. And we've done over 450 of these projects with cities, school districts, special districts, counties, everyone. And that includes redistrictings as well. But I actually live over on Pacific, just across the city line, and have a regular downtown. So I'm thrilled to be working locally and with you. Most of my projects involve a four-hour drive, not a four-minute drive. So this one's nice in that respect. So my pleasure to be with you. With that, I will jump in. This is set up as a three-phase process based on your previous discussion of this issue and the different interests and different approaches to how the council is set up and elected. The first phase is really the comply with CVRA first step. So we would be talking through the process that I'll show in detail and drawing a five district map to get into the safe harbor under CVRA. The goal is, as you'll see in the timeline, to wrap that up and then to go into what's set up here is Phase Two, which would be a more wide-ranging discussion of changing the number of districts, going to a citywide mayor, all the other options that are on the table that were discussed at your last meeting. So that's kind of two-stage process we've set up to get into that safe harbor within the very limited amount of time that the state allows, and then to set up a broader discussion. And then Phase Three is whatever system is eventually, if you put an alternative on the ballot in March, voted on in March, would then be put into place. And whatever system is chosen will be used for the November 2024 elections. Your next regular council election will be using the new system, whatever that ends up being. Here's the timeline in detail. You can see that the city has put in a lot, as you requested last discussion of this, a lot of outreach into this effort. So we're really looking to get out into the community, let the different community groups know about this process and hopefully participate in this process. So we kick off with this hearing tonight. It's the first of five statutory required hearings. And then mixed into it, you see the community forums. So we'll have these formal council hearings as required, plus much more informal, give-and-take-oriented community forums, the first of which was mentioned in the announcements earlier, is March 30. Those will continue in April. And then this first round, I should note, is entirely kind of informational, educational. There's no maps yet. And so we do this hearing, and we do the second hearing. And then at the third hearing is the first time the draft maps will be discussed and considered. So residents hopefully will be coming to these forums, learning how to draw maps and working on their proposed maps, and they can submit them whenever they want, as I'll talk about in a little bit. But the council first considers actual maps, options, at that third hearing. And then we have a whole another round of community forums. One of the things we found is that we'll get a lot of interest in the topic generally, but we get a lot more interest when there are actual maps to react to. So that will go in. And then in July will be the end of kind of the public submission time and bringing it back to the council for selecting a map in that Phase One map stage. The goal is to wrap all this up by the end of July, July 25, which would then give us August, September, and October to be looking at alternative systems that might be put on the ballot for a charter revision vote in March. And again, whatever system is ultimately landed on will be used in the November 2024 election for the first time. So that's the timeline. In terms of drawing districts, there are a set of criteria coming from three different pools. So you see on here, the first is federal laws. We have an equal number of people. And it is total people. It's not registered voters, it's not adults, it's people counted in the census with a slight adjustment for the California's prison population. But essentially, it's an equal number of human beings in each of the districts. The other federal law is the Federal Voting Rights Act. And in the context of Burbank, that really comes down to identifying where there are geographic concentrations of what the law calls a protected class. So generally speaking, Latinos, Asian-Americans, and African-Americans, and Native Americans. Where there is a geographic concentration of them, we can't divide them in a way that dilutes their voting strength. And you'll see some maps of those in a moment. I will note, obviously, both in my own Glendale, when we went through this process, and here, and in Pasadena, when we did this process in Pasadena, there are obviously other groups, Armenians being the most predominant one. They're not a protected class. Well, they haven't been identified as protected class under the Voting Rights Act. They do fall into what we'll come back to, which is a community of interest. So I'm not ignoring them, they're just not under the federal law in that context. So then the third federal requirement is no racial gerrymandering. So race is one factor you can look at when you're weighing maps and map options, but it cannot be what the court has called the predominant factor. So you can't say, I like these two maps generally, but I'm going to vote for this one because it's 28% Latino in this district and that one's 26. You can't make race be the predominant factor, it can just be one thing. Are we dividing up any of these protected classes? No. So it's a, you can go too far with racial gerrymandering, and you can fall short by violating the Voting Rights Act. So we'll work carefully with your legal team to make sure that none of the maps that you come before you for final decision violating any of those rules. The second piece is relatively new. So in 2020, California implemented what's called the Fair Maps Act. And it put in place this prioritized list of criteria. So federal comes first, but then comes the California rules. Number one, the districts have to be contiguous. You know, they have to all touch. You can't have a piece on the west end of the city and a piece on the east end of the city and call it a district. They all have to touch. That's pretty easy. The second one is really the biggest one that comes down to being the biggest discussion in most redistricting and districting projects, and that is minimizing the division of neighborhoods and what are called communities of interest. And I'll come back to that, but just briefly, a neighborhood's pretty straightforward. A community of interest is a socioeconomic or other issue-oriented group that should be kept together for the purposes of their fair representation. So I'll come back to these in a little bit more detail. The third state requirement is easily identifiable boundaries. So where possible, follow freeways, railroads, rivers. Things are easy for the voters to understand. The idea here is really, when voters go out to knock on doors in precinct walk-in elections, make it easy for them to know which doors to knock on. It's a lot easier if you're following major roads than if you have to zig and zag through a neighborhood. And then the fourth, and again, these are prioritized in the state law, so this is the fourth and lowest priority among the state, is compact. Don't bypass one group of people to get to another group of people. And the way that works in the priority ranking is don't bypass one group of people to get to another group of people unless it's to meet one of the higher criteria. So if you've got an odd-shaped neighborhood, you can bypass people that aren't in that neighborhood to get to the other group of people or to follow a major road, that kind of thing. But it is the fourth. And then state has a prohibition. You cannot draw districts in ways designed to favor or discriminate against a political party. This goes along with California's nonpartisan local elections. We shouldn't be drawing districts to help the Republicans or to help the Democrats. So, and the way we deal with that one is none of our data that we're using has any partisan data in it at all. So we're not only not favoring it, we're not considering that data at all. So those are the requirements, state and federal. The third column is traditional principles that the courts have recognized as acceptable considerations. So these only come into play once maps address all the other statutory requirements, and these are not requirements, you can ignore them if you choose to. But the first is respect the voters' choices and avoid unnecessary pairing of incumbents. This one often catches people's attention, obviously. But the idea is actually for the voters. Essentially, the voters elected the current council, and if current council members get put together, it doesn't matter if the voters think both have earned reelection, they can't reelect both. So where possible, after following all the other criteria, it is possible to say, okay, let's move one block if that allows the voters to then decide whether these two, both of these members have earned reelection, or if the voters aren't going to be able to choose and this one's just out. So that's where that factor comes in from the court's perspective. You can also consider future population growth. If you know one area is going to grow much faster than the rest, you can slightly underpopulate it. We still have the equal population requirement that gives us just a very small range, but you can slightly underpopulate an area if you know it's going to be faster growing than the others. This gets discussed a lot, but usually the other criteria kind of weigh in more heavily and it rarely is an end factor in a map. So it's a lot of different factors to balance out as people are drawing maps and as you're evaluating maps. Don't worry, I'm not going to go through all the next data on this slide. We just make this publicly available so people can start thinking about it. The key number I will talk about is the top left is your total population by your prison-adjusted 2020 census population count. You can see there 107,000, just over 107,000, which gives you the key number is 21,510 people per district. Like I mentioned earlier, there's a couple percent plus or minus on that, but it's a pretty small margin, so every district's going to have about that many people in it, one way or another. The citizen voting age population data, that's the next top-left section, that's what we and your legal team will look at in terms of making sure that the plans comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. That's considered the best measure of the eligible voter population by race. So we'll look at that. And then you've got some other data that sometimes comes into play with the Voting Rights Act in terms of registration and turnout by ethnicity. All that data comes from the state. And then on the right is the data that tends to be more interesting because it can define communities of interest. So concentrations of age, concentrations of other languages spoken at home. And then when you get down to the bottom, you get down to income levels, and then multifamily versus single-family housing, and renter versus owner-occupied housing. And I'll show you, we have these in maps, too. The main reason we put this slide in here is to show you, each map that you get will have all of this data for each of the districts. So if people are interested in, let's make District X be, you know, majority renter, they'll be able to look at the files for each map and see, oh, okay, it is majority renter, or no, it's not majority renter, or whatever are these community factors they want to look at. The socioeconomic factors, especially the ones on the right, are not required to look at, but often those are what people want to look at, so we provide them for everything, for all the maps and all the districts. So next, we'll go through a few maps to illustrate this. This one, CVAP, is citizen voting age population. And so this obviously is for Latinos, as you can see. The blue are lower percentages, as you get up to the greens, you're into the majority Latino, and then yellows and reds are two-thirds Latino or above in terms of citizens of voting age, your eligible voters. So you can see two real concentrations up by the airport, you get a bit of a concentration, and then coming in the I-5 corridor, you get relative to the rest of the city a concentration, a little bit down by the freeway in the south as well. The key thing that jumps out of this map when I look at is there's no area where you're going to be able to draw a majority Latino district. The numbers just aren't there. And so when we talk about the Federal Voting Rights Act, we're talking about those three pockets, not dividing any one of those three. They don't necessarily all have to be drawn, all three of them into one district, but we don't want to divide up the kind of pocket around the airport. We don't want to divide up the freeway corridor in a way that dilutes their voting strength and so on. So that's how we use this. Often, if you have an area where you have a more like split population, you'll quickly see on this map, oh, the west side is all Latino, we'll have to draw a council district over there, and the west side is not Latino, or the east side's not Latino, we don't want to mix those two. You don't have that issue here, you have a much more blended community. Just covering the Voting Rights Act categories, the next slide, you have Asian-Americans as in voting age population. Again, fairly evenly distributed throughout the city. A couple of city blocks where the numbers pop a little bit, but nothing that's going to be the numbers that would change how a district is as a whole. And then same thing for African-Americans. Again, relatively low percentages, but distributed all through the city. Then the next slide, not expecting folks to look at this in detail, we're just giving you a sense of how these maps look from a big picture. These are those other socioeconomic categories we talked about. So in the top left, we've got households that have a child at home, a child underage 18 at home. So you can see a little bit more lighter colors along the freeway corridor, but it's not a huge, there's not a red area and a purple area that we get. Particularly, that map pops when you have a large sun city or other retirement community that's all senior housing kind of thing. Here, your senior housing is more building by building, not whole neighborhoods. Spanish spoken at home, again, similar to the Latino map we looked at earlier. Household income, over $75,000 per year. Get a little bit more yellows and reds up in the hills, but not a huge contrast as we go through the city. Really, the two that come up as geographic concentrations are the bottom two, the renters, and closely related to that, multifamily housing. And all of you, I'm sure, are very familiar with this. We're kind of putting in map things that everyone kind of has a general idea about. Along the I-5 corridor downtown, you get a lot more multifamily housing and renters, a little bit down in the south around the freeway as well. So these are all factors that people can look at as they're drawing maps. Other than the Voting Rights Act pieces, they don't have to. So this transitions us into this neighborhood and community of interest piece. The first question is just asking people, what are your neighborhoods? And there's no wrong answer here. Often, people disagree about what the boundaries of their neighborhood are, which is why community input and community participation is so key. And the key thing is for people to tell us not just the name of their neighborhood, but what are the boundaries? Or what do they consider the boundaries? Because we, as your consultants and the other residents drawing the maps, need to be able to draw a line that hopefully keeps each neighborhood together. So that's what we want to look for, get public input on. It's just what are your traditional neighborhoods that should be considered in this process? Communities of interest take it another step, where it could be, you know, really, a neighborhood is a community of interest, certainly. But a community of interest could also be a larger area that has a shared issue that ties them together, or shared interest. It could be language spoken at home, you know, folks that need city documents translated. They could be a community of interest. Folks impacted by the airport could be a community of interest. Any kind of community that has a shared issue that relates to city policies can be defined as a community of interest. What we really say is to folks who want to come in and share their thoughts, tell us your story. How do you think of yourself and how you fit into this city? Obviously, Burbank as a whole, everyone fits into, but if they look at their little piece of it, what is it? And the key second factor for people to think about, and this gets a little bit unusual, but a community of interest might not benefit from being in one district. One thing we always emphasize is that most people's experience with districts is county supervisors. And they think of each county running their district as a little kingdom, or now, queendom in L.A. County, where the supervisor really makes all the decisions for their district. That's not the case in schools, special districts, or cities. It's still going to take three votes to do anything. There's none of that, I decide what gets built in my district at a city level, it's all three votes for anything. And so we do get folks that say, hey, I'm a community of interest, this is my issue, but if I only have one council member representing me, then I only have one vote and I have to go get two more to pass anything. So we do get areas that in the end decide, I'm a community of interest, but I want to be divided. It reduces the chance of us winning one seat to get a seat at the table, but it has two people from the council coming to our meetings, listening to our issues and responding. So when you think about a community of interest, think about what defines it, and then do you benefit from being in one district as a community of interest, or you better off in two? And there's no right or wrong answer. Often, people in the same community disagree about that, and that's where it comes down to the council's decision in the end. So those are neighborhoods and communities of interest to get the discussion going. There is going to be a lot of discussion. The city has brought on Ariano and Associates, and they have given a partial list here of the efforts they already have launched that are going on. They're trying to really reach out both to the, obviously, many groups in Burbank that are already engaged. One of the things I love about this city is how involved everyone already is. I didn't mention my daughter was a Burbank Girl Scout, one of your tens of thousands of Burbank Girl Scouts, and actually, my kids played AYSO here. So I've seen your community engaged and involved, and it's great to see. So they're already planning pop-up events, going out to where your community already is. They gave me a couple of notes to pass along, they're already talking to, going back, they're working on your specific plan outreach as well. So they're kind of taking notes from that and reaching out to perhaps your Black History Month market. They mentioned they're already getting out to talk to the Islamic Center Game Night and the downtown Burbank Cultural Market. So those are the kinds of things, they're looking to go where the people are and get the word out about this effort. And then they're also reaching out, obviously, through all the usual notification channels, social media, print, newspapers, they're looking at ads, banners in parks, and they mentioned they're also looking to community-based organizations to, again, go where the people are and get them involved and share why this issue is involved. So all this will be going on throughout this whole process and is already underway. And the goal with that engagement is to get people to participate, not just by coming to council meetings and sharing their thoughts, but actually drawing maps. One of the wonderful things often for the elected officials in the community is normally, if someone doesn't like what you're doing, they come up here and say, I don't like it. Well, if they don't like the map, we hand them a map and say, fix it. So it's not just yes or no, now it kind of turns the tables and the residents get to draw the maps. And so we have a whole bunch of tools ranging from really simple to more complex, depending on how deep in residents want to dive to help out with this process. But the key thought is in blue here. I'm going to go through some tools that are aimed at empowering residents, but they don't have to use them. As we say here, if you just want to sketch a map on a napkin, we'll take that, too, especially here where it's so easy for residents to identify major roads. Say, hey, just go Buena Vista to the west, make that a district.
Also, a lot of our residents are animators, so they're really good at drawing.
That's true. So the first tool is a Draw Your Neighborhood tool, and all these are going to be on the website, or actually, already on the website, which is linked from the city's homepage. So if you go there, it's really simple, you just click on the little icon, drag it to where you want to start, and you just click around your neighborhood. You can zoom in to get really detailed. So the goal here is not to draw a district, it's simply saying, keep my neighborhood or my community of interest together. Really easy tool, you just click, click, click on the screen, and it really is essentially a Google Maps, underlying map. So it's really easy to use. And then after you finish clicking on your shape, a little note pops up that says, what's your name, what's your contact info, and what, describe this neighborhood or community that you're telling us about, so that we have something more than just a line. We know what is it that makes that a neighborhood? Are they all united around a school, all united around a park? What is it that ties them together? So that's really easy. Also really easy is, as you heard, population numbers are the key to having legal districts. We have to equal population. So there's a simple paper map. We divided the city up into what we call population units, and people can simply take this map and add the numbers up and draw their districts and get a population-balanced map without ever touching a computer. So if they don't have good internet access, or if they just prefer not to use a computer, they can draw a map. Now, they don't have any demographics or socioeconomics, obviously, when you do this, but they can get a population-based map that would meet the legal requirements. I will note, too, all these maps, whether they're drawn using any of these tools or drawn on a napkin, we get them and we process them into our software, and when they go out to the public and come to the council, they'll all look the same. The same professional layout that all those demographics will run for them, for all their maps. So you'll see all of this stuff. And then the last one is DRA, Dave's Redistricting App. This has been around about 20 years at the state redistricting level, and then about two years ago, they modified it so it could be used for local redistricting, and it's just taken off. Really, really easy to use, online mapping tool. It lets people draw at the same city block level of detail that we can draw it. So they have all the numbers and all the power that we have, but it really is just a paintbrush tool. So at the community forums, we'll demo how to do this in detail. Also, on the website is a short, I think it's three and a half minute video that teaches you everything you need to know to use this tool. And then for those that really want to dive in and get behind the scenes, there's a 15-minute video of how to use all the power user tools. But it's really easy, you just zoom in, start clicking, and essentially paint with the color. You see the five colors in the top left for the districts. So that's available for people to draw their lines. This will give them their demographics, will tell them what, there's actually a report they can click on that will have a big red light when they're out of balance and a green light when they're in balance. So it's very handy to use and very easy to use, but has all of that power behind it. One key thing to emphasize, though, it's their map until they submit it. And so as you see in the last bullet here and is all over the website, when you finish a map, you have to get the link, which is really easy at the top of the screen, and email that link in, because we don't know that they've drawn the map until they send that link in to the city email address. So once they send that in, then we'll process it and take care of it and all that. So simple, simple tools of just draw your neighborhood or use a piece of paper, all the way up to this powerful online tool, whatever people wish to use to dive into this. So with that, that's the big intro to this process and project. And then, of course, the statutory goal of this hearing is to get any initial neighborhood or community of interest input the residents may want to share, in addition, answer any questions you residents have.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Anything else to add to that report, Mr. Attorney?
No, nothing further to add.
Okay, great. I will quickly move on to public comment and then get a response. If you do want to comment on this particular item, there's a salmon-colored card, please turn that in. First up, I have David Donahue, followed by David Holtzman. Hello, Mr. Donahue.
Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, council members and staff. I was the first person to submit an actual map to the Burbank Unified School District. I am very aware of the process. And to the presenter's comment that it is easy, well, I may not be the sharpest knife in the drawer. It was not easy for me. I had to understand and kind of go through the instructional video. I dove into the 15-minute one and actually paused it during sections when I had to understand the paintbrush, busting blocks, and then also seeing how everything kind of balanced out. I attended a presentation by the demographers at Dolores Puerta. It was me and maybe three or five or six other people. Disappointingly low attendance. But I did learn about the future population, and I think that that would be one of the aspects I would like council to address, because we know we have a lot of apartment buildings that are coming online. We also have, in the Empire District, we have at least 800 apartment units that have, one has been approved and two are in planning, so that's going to offset things. If you look at the BUSD mapping, you'll see that mine is population-unbalanced because I accounted for about 2,000 people being in the one district. So yes, it's a little involved, but the online tool is by far the most robust, it'll give you the most data, and I think that's where I think citizens, residents, are going to be able to participate most effectively. Secondly, on districting, I am really in favor of five. I don't see having a weak mayor, I see having the balance. I have really been impressed with the way that you all can work and kind of represent the community, and I would be a very strong advocate of just five districts and no mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have David Holtzman, followed by Andre Dinesian.
Council members, okay, you already know that I think what you've kicked off here is a huge waste of time and money and effort. I want to give you a little bit of a perspective from a redistricting commissioner tonight. I am a redistricting commissioner, I am a member of the county redistricting commission. And in county redistricting, Burbank is considered a community of interest of its own, and not dividing Burbank is to be prioritized. Now, my commission was not to consider where incumbents live at all. I don't think you should do it. In fact, I think if you're going to have a timeline for redistricting, it should include... it should include giving, you should be giving final line drawing authority to an independent commission. I think of you all, of you, as fair-minded, and drawing your own districts like the timeline before you has you doing, it just doesn't suit you. So delegate. I'm not speaking for my commission here, but let me just tell you that district, that redistricting is a pain in the ass. It literally divides society and promotes stereotypes. You should not do it if you do not have to, and you don't. In fact, if you do do it, you won't be able to use the lines for a city council election unless the voters, for some reason, amend the city charter first. So what are you doing here? Voting for a timeline to come up with election districts that can't be used in an election? So why are you even thinking about continuing to do what you're doing here? Carving Burbank into pieces? Stop it. Stop it now. Look, I'm offering to use my legal skills to help the city attorney beat back the unconstitutional lawsuit threat here in an inexpensive, efficient manner. He already has my card, and I would volunteer my time. But if you go through with redistricting, somebody's going to sue to stop whatever district you come up with from being used in even one city council election. And who will do that? Maybe voters or taxpayers who are going to join one Burbank.org, which I've just founded, to prevent the division of Burbank. So, also, please have somebody fix the website, what you get to through BurbankCouncilRedistricting.com, so it no longer is gaslighting Burbank residents with lies. The website is making it seem like it's a done deal, that you're going to have district elections, which you're not. They're not authorized by law now. So it looks like an attempt to gaslight the public about that. So, anyway, and if you're going to have a timeline, include some accountability measures, like posting all the contracts and all the correspondence relevant to this item. And, yeah, eight seconds left, hard for me to say, but I do respect the work of Douglas Johnson. I recommended that my commission hire him. I know him from the election law email list, but my commission unfortunately didn't. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Andre Dinesian. And that's my last comment card, if anyone else wants to turn them on.
Good evening, council. So, this is a little depressing. Obviously, I don't think anybody, anybody's first choice would be chopping up Burbank into bits, but I have been following, as I'm sure the public has. It does not look like there's any other reasonable action that the council can take. Although, I mean, if that works, but I'm not a lawyer, so I really have no idea. What I wanted to talk about is, if we're going to go ahead with this, we're going to have to, we should do it right. So a couple things. First, I want to echo, pardon me, I forgot this gentleman's name, but Holtzman. Mr. Holtzman's point of handing over the final decision to an independent commission, I think you guys are great, but there are some people who might not. And while you guys might make a good decision, what about the next group? What about the group after that? So, any kind of decision where you're touching the fundamental nature of democracy, you don't want to leave that up to chance. You want to make it so it can weather any storm. If every single person on council in the next 10 years was just terrible, awful people by whatever happenstance, it should still survive, and it should be able to last to the next group. So that's point one. Point two, I've been thinking about it, and we spoke briefly, Councilmember Takahashi, about this. I think it might be worth considering having, instead of five smaller districts, Burbank is a relatively small city. It might be worth exploring three districts with two council members each, and then one, a seventh, at-large elected mayor. And it would be a weak mayor, as was previously discussed. The benefit of this is, in case one district gets a representative they don't like, they get another chance by offsetting the election years. So there's a balance, sort of like a junior and senior senator. It's a bit of a check and balance within the district itself. I'm not an expert in these matters, but it seems to me a more reasonable approach than five with one council member per. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a final card, Mr. Schlossman.
Good evening, everybody. You know, the speaker previous to this fellow, I disagree with everything he said. Redistricting is here, there's no way around it. It's common. And you got to remember, these districts that you draw, they're adjusted periodically, every 10 years, as the census and the populace changes. If you try and fight it, you got to pay, you got to sign a blank check, and you got to pay the opposing party's legal fees. You know this type of stuff. I think we should be having a broader district, a broader conversation about how many council members we want, elected mayor, and eliminating the city manager. These are all types of things that we should be, discussions that we should be having right now, not later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlossman. And that's the final in-person comment. Do we have any callers on the line?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, okay. Send them through.
The first caller is Jamie Keizer.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, council members Mullins, Perez, Takahashi, and city staff. It's Jamie Keizer from the Burbank Chamber of Commerce, and I'm calling in tonight to discuss Agenda Item 7 regarding plastic waste reduction regulations. This is going to be a heavy list on the city and businesses throughout the community, restaurants in particular. And based on what I've learned, it doesn't look like the restaurants have been involved in the conversation to date, which poses a significant concern. Not enough information is being shared with the right parties. Outreach and education are essential components. What you're proposing is vague, and the real question is definition of reusable. How do we eliminate things like paper napkins? Businesses that heavily rely on single-use plastic products, such as food and beverage containers, will have to switch to a more sustainable alternative, such as compostable or reusable containers. These alternatives may be more expensive, and the cost of sourcing new products, training employees, and educating customers on the switch is an important piece. It's my understanding that two new employees will be brought in by the city to help manage the undertaking. I ask that inclusion of the restaurants be top priority. Inviting restaurant owners into the conversation early in the process is imperative as you build out the plan of action. They will need to understand the timeline and the tiered rollout plan through July of 2024. I also learned that restaurants will be required to add a $0.25 cost for disposable cups, which will impact businesses that sell coffee and beverages, and I believe the cost will fall on the customers. To help offset waste, will the health department allow customers to bring their own reusable cups or to-go containers? This may cause a sanitary issue, so further research is needed. We are not imposed to this, but tonight is too soon to vote in support of moving forward. We want to ensure that the appropriate plan is rolled out, including the voices of the restaurant. Anything the city can do to educate the business community between now and the deadline of July 2024 needs to be a requirement. I look forward to gaining a better understanding on the plan for Burbank. Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick, Mr. City Attorney, if anything is commented on that's not in the public hearing, it just goes into the record, and there's no problem?
That's correct. And the later item is not a public hearing in and of itself, so there's not a problem with it not being part of the record.
All right. And we do have one more caller, yes? All right. Let's let it through.
The next caller is Simon Hamel.
Hello?
The next caller is Simon Hamel.
Hi, Simon, you're on.
Hi. Good evening, members of council. I'm Simon Hamel. I've been a Burbank resident for 14 years and an American citizen who prizes democracy for 43 years. I'm calling to oppose a change in the people's government without a direct vote of the people to freely choose how they want to elect their leaders. Though so far, I'm not fond of the idea of districts, I really cannot get behind this because of the undemocratic way a small group of special-interest donors has come in to fund a lawsuit and essentially outbid the city, setting the dollar value too high to afford to keep our freedom to vote and subsequently steal the liberty to directly choose our own form of government. There's a lot of people who talk a big game and make a lot of noise about freedom versus tyranny, supposedly. How can we expect anyone to take us seriously if we entertain doing this without a direct vote of at least a majority of the governed citizens, or I would hope, for a big change like this, at least a 2/3s majority of voters? Actions speak a lot louder than words, and people should pay attention to what is said, but also, in the end, can certainly ask themselves, "Did I get to vote to change my own government, yes or no? And then if not, is this really my government, or maybe it's the highest bidders?" It's one thing not to be able to convince people to vote your way, and that one's ideas are worth voting for, and that's entirely different than having no vote to decide what the overall government system will be. Will we get to vote to choose or not? Please, as this moves forward, bring in our state reps to look at the Voting Rights Act. Whatever the intentions were in creating it, I can't imagine that anyone intentionally knew it would be used to try and steal the direct vote of people to choose their own form of government. Generally, do we even think having like nine districts will be better? Our cities like LA run significantly better than Burbank. Is it worth the effort to do this if there was no lawsuit? It seems like a waste of government resources. And you certainly can't say we haven't had huge turnouts in recent elections, so there's no real argument to say any Burbank resident, by any measure, hasn't been represented. Based on tonight's presentation, the expert says you can't even satisfy the plaintiff's complaint by drawing a district. Right now, all city council votes matter to all of us equally. Maybe think about not changing that. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope you will also consider paying to fight back until you are certain the people who will be governed are making this choice. The long-term cost of not fighting is beyond monetary. Good night.
Thank you. All right, there being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. City Attorney McDougall, or contracted, would you want to say any further comments or response?
I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson. So with regard to Mr. Donahue's comment, I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson to talk about the community workshops and what sort of resources will be made available to people who wish to get assistance drawing maps. The city is making those resources available, and I'll ask for him to comment on that. With regard to Mr. Holtzman, my legal advice has already been provided to my client in closed session. We have looked at the law, and those discussions are confidential. Suffice it to say, though, that the California Voting Rights Act presumes that any system other than districts is suspect. And so that's the battle that the city is facing. Many cities have sued to challenge elections, and Santa Monica is currently sitting at the California Supreme Court and has paid over $6 million, to our understanding, for the privilege of defending their lawsuit. So the legal arguments are unsettled, but without question, we have a federal Voting Rights Act, and we have a California Voting Rights Act, and the actions that the city has taken so far is in conformance with those laws. With regard to independent commission, the California Elections Code provides for adoption of the maps by the governing body, which is this city council. As to who draws the boundaries, Mr. Johnson has already laid out a pretty comprehensive process. This is the first of two hearings without discussion of maps. At the third hearing, you will see the product from the community engagement process before you decide maps. And the council's not involved in maps until you see maps, unless you choose to do so as an elector in this jurisdiction and draw them using the tools or attending the workshops. So there is a great deal of independence, and it is delivered to you by national demographics through the workshops and the community's right to participate in the drawing of those maps in the first three workshops, and actually, some of the later workshops before the third hearing is when the maps are unveiled.
Correct. The third hearing, they get unveiled, and then people can still draw revisions for the fourth.
Right, okay. So, and with regard to Mr. Hamel's comment, the law presumes that at-large voting disenfranchises and dilutes the vote of some voters. So those are the issues that we're looking at. The mapping tools, the demographics analysis looks at giving weight to ethnic voting populations. So that's the very process that we're going through. And everyone will still have a vote. The question is just whether it's at-large or by district. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson to give some details of the process.
Real quick, Mr. Johnson, before you begin, one of the public commentators mentioned they attended the school districts version of this. It's, can you just clarify, it's your same team, you're running the same program over there, or is it different?
Same firm, same law, but the communities of interest and those kind of considerations are very different for school districts than they are for cities.
But the tools and the technical stuff you're using is the same?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Please continue.
Yes, it is. So, as you just referenced, City Attorney, at these, at those community forums I mentioned, it won't just be showing the tool on a PowerPoint slide. We'll bring the tools up, we'll demonstrate for them, because there is a learning curve. You know, it's not, you just sit down and draw a map. You do have to watch. It's easy, it's relatively simple, but you do have to watch the three-minute video or see a demo of how to do it. But once you see a demo, it's pretty straightforward. The other consideration on the commission's piece, we often work with independent commissions. We're happy to work with independent commissions. They do add considerable amount of time to the process. So under the statute for how the commission gets set up, it's going to take at least two, two and a half, and more likely, three months to get a commission up and running. And given that timeline we laid out of, we're looking to get this first phase done so you get onto the safe harbor, and then you can get to the bigger question, which I think, actually, from the comments, there's a lot of interest in the city getting to that discussion. We first have to get that map in place so that you don't get sued. And then you can get to the larger-picture discussion. So, happy to work with commission, but it would put you back by two and a half or three months, which really is all the time we have for that Phase 2, before you have to get it onto the ballot. It is one of the tricks of California. People may be remembering, two years ago, the primary was in June, but this is California's new thing. In presidential years, our primaries are in March. In gubernatorial years, it's in June. We just bounce back and forth because of the presidential primary. Folks may remember when we had the February presidential primary, and it was all by itself, and then we had the June legislative primary, and I think turnout in June was 12%. So the state learned that was a bad idea. So now we bounce everything back and forth. And this year, unfortunately, for this purpose, it's the earlier date. So that, and I will say, one of the things we tend to say with pride is that because of this big suite of tools to empower the residents, we do say, really, the goal here is to make every resident of the city a commissioner. So it's not quite the same as an independent commission, where the council's totally out of the process, but it's darn close. And we do our best to be as close as we can. That was about it. As was mentioned, the three districts with the CWA, that's all things we can consider in Phase 2. We first have to get in, in the statuteally-provided safe harbor, we have to get the five-seat map in place so that you don't get sued and lose all control of the process. I think that was everything I got. If you, if the council has any other questions, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Mr. Mayor, I have one further comment. Mr. Holtzman had made a comment about not being able to vote in districts. There's actually, if the city adopts an ordinance approving five districts, the most simple form, there's actually very little conflict with the city's charter. It's the same number of seats specified in the charter, and it doesn't change how the mayor is elected. There's a very minor conflict that, under the government code, appears to give us ample authority to adopt at least a simple. All of the more complex iterations of districts and separately-elected mayor, we would need to authorize that with a charter vote, which is why we've provided for more study of that after we get into the safe harbor. So there is authority to proceed with districts. There would be a two-word conflict with the charter. We are less concerned about that than we are with not going to districts in the first instance.
Could you give us those two words, just so we have it?
At-large.
Okay, there it is. Okay.
Oh, I did have one other thing, sorry, I almost forgot. Mr. Holtzman mentioned the county process and consideration of incumbents, and I do want to bring up, the county's commission has a different set of laws. So they are officially barred from considering where incumbents live. As I mentioned, you have the option to not consider it, but it is allowed if you choose to consider it in this case.
Okay, great. Before we deliberate, I want to allow the council to ask any questions, so please hang out. I only have one question, so I'll just get it out of the way. An independent commission, regardless of if we go with an independent commission, at the end of the day, they would present maps to us, and we would have to vote on it as a body anyway, right?
Well, there are two forms- Well, there are two forms of commission. There's, there's really three, but technically there's only two that really matter. There's the advisory commission, which would do that. And then the statute actually allows for creation of an independent commission that would actually adopt the, essentially adopt the ordinance themselves. That's why it takes so long, is the council has to set up the process to select them, and then you have to go through the process of selecting them, and then they have to be seated and trained. And that, it's a relatively new provision of the law, maybe four years ago.
Okay, but does our city charter allow for that to happen, or we would?
So that would be in anticipation of creating the districts. We're not, we're just going through a process now. Until you adopt an ordinance, we're trying to come into compliance with the California Voting Rights Act. We are halfway through a 90-day safe harbor, with the possibility of extending out to 180 days, but we're already close to 45 days in.
Well, I guess my question is, we have a bunch of boards and commissions that work in advisory capacity for the city anyways, but anything that they advise on or put forth, we have to vote on.
None of them, as currently configured, none of them can adopt an ordinance
Right.
in place of the city council.
So under our city charter, we only have the option for the first version. If we wanted to do that second version, we would have to amend the charter to do that second version?
No, Mr. Johnson's indicating there's a separate procedure under the Elections Code that we haven't evaluated because we've been under threat of litigation since August.
Oh, I see. So that would be a whole thing that we're not prepared for, to do that second version. And if we, and so I guess my question would be, if we were doing the first version, it comes back to us for a vote anyways, so that doesn't seem like an independent commission. But if we wanted a truly independent commission, it would be a whole thing. We haven't studied it. We don't have any staff time on it yet. It's not even part of this report, and we're closing it on 45 days.
That option has not been presented to the council.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Just to clarify, the ordinance, the council adopts that case, is actually the ordinance creating the commission, and then, so that's your ordinance, and it just never comes back.
Right.
And they finish. But you're exactly right. And many of our jurisdictions, under this 90 and 180 clock, do realize that's a lot of time. And keep in mind, that's time where the public can't be participating because you're creating the commission. So they go through it with council-directed now, but then consider creating a commission for 2031, when you'll have to update the lines.
For the next census.
Yeah, and when you'll have a much longer time frame available.
Oh my God. Doing this under threat of lawsuit is not the right way to do it.
And council, amongst the city council, they have expressed the interest in solidifying the redistricting process before we get to the 2024 election, so the council has an understanding of what the redistricting will be. And so we would propose to bring that back in the second phase of this, so that council isn't left wondering, you know, what will happen.
Okay, so I guess that was my one question. Does anybody else have any questions of the staff on this report at all? Yes, Councilmember Mullins?
I have actually a comment and a request. For transparency reasons, I don't see on any of the maps that you provided, which excellent mapping, by the way. I don't see where we show our current council members where they live by having a dot somewhere. So it would be very transparent to the public to understand this is where the current council is. So if we can add that to, on the website or during the presentation, I think it would be helpful for the public to understand. We don't even have to put names. We could just put the dots that they know where we at.
For purposes of helping them understand how the current council is distributed throughout the city, or?
Yes, that's correct.
So that when, so that when they draw districts, they're also thinking about where the current council members are?
I think in drawing districts, it might be confusing to like where we're all situated in the city. And I think, you know, it's helpful for the public with, again, we don't even have to put names or anything, but to understand where it's laid out right now among all five of us as current council, because remember, in the 2024 elections, this would affect two council seats versus three seats. So it's good for the public to know that at least the three seats are not being affected until 2026 election. So for the purpose of education, transparency, I think it's important for the public to have that information.
So, part of how the, so logically, the easiest way to implement this is as the council seats come up, and that is a very common way to do it. However, there may be options to just do fresh start as well. So that's a question.
And that's, that could possibly happen as well, but I don't think there is anything wrong of showing the public that this is where the current council resides. I don't think it's legally wrong. I don't think it's something that this council member here wants to hide where my current resident is, because this is public information, unless the council disagrees with me. But I think it's important for the public to see where our current dots on that map is right now.
Would we just do that, Mr. Johnson, as a layer, like a toggle-on layer in the mapping tool, or how have you seen that done?
Yeah, there's a couple ways we can do it. One piece, just, one thing that we always do, because it's tied into that election sequence question, which seats are when, is for each map, we'll put, by law, we have to put which seats are proposed to be up in which year. And we typically would just put the, in parentheses after that, which council members in that district. So let's say 2024, District One, with, you know, council members X and Y. So that's not specific to where they live, and that is, the sequencing is required, and the names just make sense, because that's how we determine the sequencing. The other piece we can do is put together a map, which is, we don't put your exact, we don't put a dot on your house. But we take the census block where you live. So really, in Burbank, that's the city block where you live, and just indicate that. And that could be both in the interactive review map that is, people can use to look at maps. It's not turned on by default, so if people don't want to consider it, they just don't turn it on. And it could be available on the website as a PDF, so if they want to download it, they could. But if they don't want to look at it, they wouldn't download it. So that's the second option that we can do, if that's the council's wish.
Yeah, and I'm not looking for the exact address. I'm looking for the one dot in that one radius, you know, however you divide it, five miles, six miles, it doesn't really matter. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Takahashi.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To add on to Councilmember Mullins' comment, I like the idea of having in the districts our name in parentheses of who is going to be in that district. I think that's helpful. But I do want to add that if we put that information into the, at least the initial drawings, I have a little bit of a concern that that might create a little bit of confusion of what's prioritized, because it is the last, it says here, that's the very last prioritizing is where we live, right? And it could, you know, could affect us, and that's true. But I think the ultimate reason for doing this is for fairness, ultimately, for the next 10 years or however many years. So I think just, maybe that information's good to have, but maybe presented in such a way that it's really clear that the priorities are these things first, and that this is more of a, if, you know, a want-to, if we want to have it, and this is kind of, we have to do it, if that makes sense. Because I just don't want folks to get distracted, to try to focus on this first, and then also not to look at the long term, which is the reason why we're doing this, is not just for us, but for the long-term planning of the city. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just follow that up with a question of, can that be a toggle switch, but at the bottom of the list of all the toggles?
Yes, that's where we always put it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I do have one other question. It's okay. One of the emails we got from community members asked a question about our charter review committee. And so on our timeline here, if and when would the charter review committee be involved with this, or how can, if they do make decisions about our charter, about elections, how would that intertwine with our timeline for this?
So the charter review committee is on hold. They're aware of this. This was one of the questions they had last year. And there wasn't sufficient time in consideration of the last election to really deal with this issue. But now they know it's happening. They have two particular issues that they're looking at: term limits and social equity, inclusiveness, language in the charter. And they're holding off on a public survey so as not to confuse the residents about term limits and districting. But they're aware that council may have some work for them to do, some outreach work in the second phase. We didn't, I didn't feel that there was enough time to have them run a separate process and comply with the safe harbor deadlines that we have. As I indicated, we're already halfway through our initial safe harbor. So they're aware, and they're basically, on some of their issues, they're waiting for council direction to see whether there's some work they can do this summer.
As a follow-up to that, because it would be a charter amendment to our Elections Code, in theory, could the Charter Review Committee recommend we add term limits to the changes we could possibly make on our districting as a combined ballot measure?
So they're currently working with an idea that they would have proposals for a charter review before the March 2024 primary.
Okay. What I'm saying is, would it, is it legal to combine those two into a single ballot, or would it have to be two?
I think that will come to you through legal counsel, for counsel to decide whether to put them together or separate.
Oh, okay, I gotcha.
And there may be issues, I don't know what, there's lots of crazy law when it comes to charter review. I have no, I happily defer to them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there might be some benefit to granularity in having separate measures, so they're not opposed, they don't vote against a certain districting because they don't want term limits.
Right.
Or they want term limits, you know what I'm saying? So it may be better to make it a little bit more granular. In any event, we will have to figure out how much time is left, once we finish this initial process, to see how best to organize it.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. President?
So I'll give you the easy one first. What languages are the trilingual automated helpline in? What is, what are the languages?
So I think the helpline is the clerk's office, I believe. But I'm not sure of that. So it's whatever languages the city typically does, because Ariano's already working with you on the downtown specific plan, so they know which language you've been doing.
So this last election, we had 18 mandated languages through the county. So I don't know if there's a targeted amount of language.
We have three: Spanish, English, and Armenian.
Thank you. And then my other questions are both questions and kind of suggestions slash comments. Can we make sure, given, you know, a lot of folks here have expressed distaste for the whole process, I hear you, I am with you, I'm not excited about this, but as we've discussed, it's something that we have to do, but I think a lot of folks are not aware of that, right? And are not aware of how we got here. Is there any way to put on the website, and I didn't see anything, you know, when I first got on there, of information about the whole process, how we got here? Is that something we can do?
There is a staff report that's on the website that talks about the threat of litigation under the Elections Code and the Notice of Intention to Transition process. We haven't prepared an analysis of the actual votes and how the polarization works. I don't know if that's customary in this process. That's kind of preliminary to the decision to go to, to adopt the notice of intent.
Okay.
We can add some general, what we often do is not Burbank-specific context of C-very sweeping the state. You know, there's, I think, we're at 185 cities now that have been forced to switch.
I think that would be really helpful, I think, for folks, because I think this was mentioned by the commentators. You know, a lot of folks are going to come up and just share that they don't want this to happen. And at the end of the day, that's not extremely conducive if we're at a place where it has to happen, right? So I'd rather they know that and express their opinions about how it happens, rather than whether or not it happens or not. And then if we could also include that in each workshop at the beginning, like a slight, you know, whatever's on the website, if we could just reiterate that for folks, so that they know what to expect when they're coming in. So, you know, you come in with a paragraph on why you don't want this to happen, you understand, you know, that maybe you have to think about how it's going to happen, rather than whether it will. And then my last question is, in looking at the times for the community sessions, I saw that, you know, the evening ones were just 6:00 PM. Is it possible to stagger one of those to be a 7:00 PM session, or two of them, or, you know, move the times around a little bit? I think that'll allow for more folks who are coming home from work. I know I myself don't get back into Burbank until around 6:00. It would be nice to have some time.
We certainly, oh, yeah, we certainly.
Yes, in fact, we've provided a mixture of location types, you know, different types of city facilities, also different formats. There's virtual participation. We can, midday, there's some midday events at noon, and we could also shift in evening hour. Keeping in mind, it was quite a challenge just to place five hearings plus eight workshops. That's 13 events that we were trying to schedule. We've had to knock a few around, bump them around on the schedule to make them work, and Burbank Water and Power was generous enough to reschedule a community meeting so that there weren't conflicts with the community having to attend one important event versus another. So we can look at the schedule and see about shifting some hours as well.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. President, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Excellent presentation. I have comments, but I'm just going to ask questions in this first period. Mr. Johnson, at the beginning, you were talking about your experience, and I believe you referenced your work with Glendale. Could you tell us a little bit about the Glendale experience with districting?
Yes, so we worked both with the city and the school district over there. They were threatened with a lawsuit. Actually, one of the key things to keep in mind is in 2015, the law changed. Before that, cities had to put it to the voters. They didn't have the option to pass it by ordinance. And so what was happening is cities were putting on the ballot, the voters would turn it down. Whether they had polarized voting in the past or not, that election was polarized. So it actually created the evidence against them by going to the vote. And so it was a kind of no-win situation. So that's why the law evolved to be, now you can do it by ordinance. So Glendale got pulled in this before that. It was a complicated situation, because they're, Glendale unifies in the city charter. And so they went after the city and the school district. The school district switched after a lawsuit being filed, because there was no safe harbor. The city did not, and the plaintiffs decided that was enough. I don't know the reasons for it, but one key fact, just very facially, is the school board had, I don't think ever had a Latino on the school board, whereas if you know Frank Quintero, you know, the city council had had Frank on the council for forever, and actually going back, I think twenty or so years, there had most often been two Latinos on the city council. And so that was, that may have been why they chose not to go after the city, I don't know. But that was ultimately the plaintiff's choice to sue the school district, and not yet at least, sue the city. One of the challenges for all these districts, or cities that have gotten letters and have not switched is, there's no expiration date. So Glendale, Huntington Beach, these others, could be sued tomorrow.
So in the case of Glendale, they started down the path exploring the possibility of districts. It sounds like they retained the services of your firm, but ultimately decided, no, this isn't good for Glendale.
They decided to take the risk.
Okay.
Yeah. My favorite anecdote in this actually comes from Murrieta, where the, you know, rock-ribbed conservative to the bone city, they had probably 40 people in the audience, say, you know, fight these bullies. And the council member had my favorite line. He said, "Look, we've got two weeks to decide. If any of you out in the audience sets up a GoFundMe with a two million, and raises $2 million for a legal defense fund, you will have a 5-0 vote." No, you know, not to switch, and we will spend your money." And two weeks later, he came back, and he says, "I tell you, I just logged in, and no one created a GoFundMe account with $2 million into it." So it is, I do hope residents understand, this is not something that the council is thrilled to be doing. I don't know your individual positions, but, you know, that's generally how it goes. But you can't really say, "Don't do this." You have to say, "I'm willing to spend two to," you mentioned Santa Monica, years ago, the estimate was $6 million, is now way over that. You have to take that money from your general fund and put it aside to fight this, if you're going to fight this. That's the tough part.
To that point, the city of San Luis Obispo settled a challenge under the Voting Rights Act. I think it was in December or January, just before one of our meetings on this subject. And two weeks ago, they were sued by a much more prolific plaintiff's attorney in the Voting Rights, and they're currently defending that lawsuit. Even though they settled with a different plaintiff a month ago, they're now under a fresh litigation. And one other comment to Councilmember Perez's question, our June 15 community meeting has been scheduled for 7:00 PM, and that will be near the Northwest Library at the Fire Training Center. So they just figured that out this afternoon.
Thank you.
And we'll have more detail on each of these meetings on the website.
All right, thank you. Mr. Johnson, one other question before I switch gears to the city attorney here. We don't need to pull it up, but I'm looking at the demographic summary, one of the slides that you provided. So I'm specifically
So I'm specifically looking at voter registration, so these are folks that are registered and eligible to vote. And there's a line that says Latino est, I'm assuming that means for estimated, 21%. So if I'm reading this correctly, the Latino voting age population in the city of Burbank has a roughly 21% chance or opportunity to affect the outcome of a council vote for two or three seats, given the year.
So they're roughly 21% of the voters casting ballots?
Gotcha. Assuming a perfect world where everyone casts a ballot, 21% of those ballots, approximately, would belong to Latino voters.
Yes.
As you sit here today, when you were talking about, you had a map where you were showing the pockets of, of certain population groups. If we were to put one of those, say, into a district, how would that impact that number? Are we seeing districts where they would comprise more or less than 21% of a district?
So there'll be more than 21% of at least one district, just the way math works out that way. I, I don't know, since we had, not only can we not have the council, we actually can't draw ourselves the maps until that third hearing. So I haven't actually drawn the maps to see where those numbers are.
I, I understand, and I won't get too far into the weeds, but is it possible, as we go through this process, let's just take 2024 as an example. The Latino population, which comprises 21% of our voting base, has a chance to cast a ballot twice for two council members. And so I'll, I'll submit that they're, they have a 21%, you know, influence in the outcome, let's say. Is it possible that when we go through this process, we will find that we may only be able to develop one district for which they could constitute 30 or 40%, and no other district in which they constitute over 10%? Is that one possible outcome when we delve into the data?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. And then my last couple of questions were really for you, Mr. City Attorney. I don't believe you're quoting the law verbatim, but I just wanted to remember, you, you said something that, that I captured, I wrote it down, and I, I just want to, before I get to my final question, ask this. So you had said, I believe, the law presumes that at-large districts dilute the voting power of certain minority groups. Is, is that?
That's what I said, yes.
Okay, is that, and in your experience, it's a relatively accurate description of what the law provides?
Yes, because it, it, it keeps a cause of action open continuously to challenge a city. There's no point at which we could rest. There's no point at which this council can review all the voting evidence that the state has, and we have from the last two local elections, and create a safe harbor where you can't be sued for your decision to remain at-large. In other words, immediately after a decision or contemporaneous therewith, a new plaintiff can file a new challenge to compel you to comply with the Voting Rights Act, to, to try to increase the influence of minority, of minority voting groups.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. And here's my final question. I know from my practice and experience that the law provides for certain presumptions, but they can be rebutted. So in theory, if we go through this process and find to the contrary that the creation of districts would dilute the voting power of minority groups, the, more so than they already are, then that is something additionally for the council to consider at a later date in determining whether or not to adopt districts. Would you agree?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
But that's the case that Santa Monica is pending before the Supreme Court on, is whether or not they can carry that presumption and, and rest. So they could change law, but that case isn't yet scheduled to be heard and will not benefit us before all of our safe harbors expire.
Thank you.
Well, okay. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. I will now declare the public hearing closed. We will now deliberate amongst the council. There's not much here.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes.
I did have one more question from, uh, sorry, I forgot to ask this. Mr. McDougal, I think this goes back to you.
I'll open up the count, the hearing again, go for it.
Thank you, sorry for the sloppy work tonight. Mr. McDougal, I think there was a comment from one of the commenters tonight, that if hypothetically, maps were adopted, districts were adopted, and there was a lawsuit against the city for the adoption of districts, that we might not be able to use those in 2024. Has your office studied the, the accuracy of that claim? Is that the case?
That's a little speculative to assume the council's going to adopt districts, and then we're going to be challenged on that. We already have a proposed challenge in the first instance for not being a district, so that's something that I have not yet speculated.
Okay, thank you.
That far.
All right. Reclosed. So I'll go to the council now. There's not much, it's just approving the schedule, the timeline, basically, that's all we have on, on the docket before us. But I'm open to hearing some discussion or a motion directly. What was the council's pleasure? Councilmember Mullins?
I'm happy to make a motion if no other discussions are all good.
I, I have one comment, and then I'm, I'm good with, you, you can make the motion. I just really wanted to thank everybody for their public comment tonight, and speaking just for myself, it's not a done deal. There was a comment about you can't beat districts. I think that this would be, that sentiment would be disingenuous to the public. We're very much about to embark on a study session, if you will, to look at the data. And speaking just for myself, the question I'm going to ask is, would the create, would the creation of districts empower or dilute the voting power and influence of certain groups? And if I find that they will further dilute them, then I will not support the creation of districts. Thank you.
Yeah, and just, just so you folks know, this, this is a discussion that's been happening in Burbank for many years. There are people who support districts, people don't support districts. What I personally don't support is being put under threat of lawsuit to force our hand into something. So I'm going into this with an open mind, we'll see what comes of it. It's, it might be messy, we don't know.
And we'll make the right decision and not succumb to bullies, right, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Mullins?
All right, I'm ready to move to make a motion to approve the amendment Phase 1 districting process, Schedule 1. Second, anybody?
That was the whole motion? Wow, it is, it is light.
That's it, it's just attachment one to the staff.
Believe me, if there was anything else to read, I would have went on, that's it.
That's the shortest motion ever, is there a second? Second? All right, second? Moved by Mullins, seconded by Takahashi. Any further discussion?